City Council regular meeting of December the tenth, twenty twenty four. Meeting has been called. Your call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Vicente Medina?
Here. And I would ask our Deputy City Clerk, Pique Hashet, to lead us in the transition stage.
Day five, the elections, two, five, six, seven, eight.
Item number four, public comments, right, is not on the agenda.
I have no speaker cards.
Two and five, announcements and recitations. First, there is no regular city council meeting on the fourth Tuesday of this month. The next regular city council will be in the new year, January fourteenth, seven o'clock, right here. Item B, several of the city conferences will be closed from Tuesday, December twenty fourth, Wednesday is December first. Public safety will remain open. In the event of emergency, please call nine one one or pop online payments, permits, utilities, tickets, et cetera. Please visit www.sam.ca.gov payment center. City Council and city staff extends a warm, sincere, happy holidays and wishes you a happy and safe new year. Sorry for the voice. Item number six. Didn't ask this for Christmas. Item number six. Conference with labor negotiations, agency designated representatives. Medina, Salazar, representative manager. City Council will move into closed session. It should be very short, so that's where we brought refreshments, give you something to do while we're in the next room. We'll be back in a minute. Back from closed session, no reportable action at this time from that. We have other items on the agenda. Let's move on to item seven, consent counter. All items are considered routine or implemented by current protocol or council action and may be enacted by one motion unless there's a separate discussion and less requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items unless a council member requests a full for seven votes. Are there any council members for a vote on item? Mr. Councilman Medina?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item N for seven.
Any other items to be pulled? Any items for questions or comments?
Comment, sorry, a re-comment on seven A of minutes and smaller.
Okay. Okay, with that, if you go ahead and go to item A, bring up especially me, minutes of twenty six.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I didn't send this in advance because I only, I didn't spot it, but like, I just went through. Page seven, the meeting, three minutes. Comments to council members, it mentions that basically all five of them escaped comments, but it mentioned Vice Mayor Salazar and then Councilmember Salazar, which I believe that that second person was supposed to be Councilmember Alvaro. This little, this little.
Councilman Medina?
Yeah. Item J.
Was there anything else?
There's a thirteen on the table.
Okay, let's go to G, considered adoption of resolution approving the San Bruno Community Foundation officers for calendar year twenty twenty five. I am going to support this, but I also think this is something the council should look at. I don't believe the council needs to. Should we say annoying to the officers that have been selected by the body? It's implied that at a future consideration, but this is the process that we have. Item J, considered adoption of resolution accepting the completion of Centennial Plaza improvement project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, another great opportunity to really reflect and thank staff and be able to provide an amazing improvement to our downtown, so basically, this is a kudos to everyone involved and I hope everybody enjoys the festive decorations at Centennial Plaza.
Okay, is there anything from the public on consent with the exception of N?
I have no speaker cards.
Good evening, comments or questions, zoom in. Council action for consent for A through M, please.
Deputy Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the remainder of the consent counter, the second to item N.
I will second it.
Looked and seconded to approve all consent with the exception of N. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item N, considered adoption of resolution approving the third amendment to the employee agreement between the city of San Bruno and Alex D McIntyre. And for the record, as required under the Brown Act, I am providing the summary of the proposed amendment to the city manager's contract, item seven N. On the consent calendar adopts resolution amending the city manager's contract to one, provide the twenty twenty four winter holiday closure benefits provided to all the other employees, and two, to provide a membership here at the rack. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, and I reluctantly pulled this. And I wanted to share my thoughts on it and I want to make sure that my pulling of this and not supporting this isn't a reflection of the performance of our city manager. It's basically, it comes down to the timing of the contract and a contract will be up for possible consideration later of next year. And so at this point, I, I, I didn't feel appropriate to be able to support this.
Do you have any comments for colleagues? Any public comment?
I have no speaker cards.
To the body for action.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Second. Motion and seconded to approve item N. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passed as four one with Marty Medina dissenting. Item eight, conduct of business. One, considered adoption of resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election for the city of San Bruno held on November fifth, twenty twenty four, as provided by law. City Clerk.
I apologize, let me just pull up my presentation.
Thank you for your patience. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Lupita Huerta, City Clerk for the city of San Bruno, and I will be presenting the results of the November fifth, twenty twenty four municipal election. In June twenty twenty four, the council adopted a resolution, the resolution calling a general municipal election for the seats of mayor, a city council member for district two, and a district, and a council member for district three. In July of twenty twenty four, the council adopted a resolution and ordinance to submit a measure to the voters for general obligation bonds, also known as geo-bonds, to finance municipal improvements constituting public infrastructure. Set election took place on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty four, and the results are Rico Medina was elected as mayor, Tom as council member for district two, and Michael Salazar was elected as council member for district three. Andrew Q was approved and adopted by the voters, surpassing the required two-third percentage of votes. Therefore, tonight's recommended action is to adopt the resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election for the city of San Bruno held on November fifth, twenty twenty four, as provided by law. And I think these were.
Very good for the report. Any questions in the rollings from the report? Any public comments?
I have no speaker cards.
Any action by council on the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Motion made to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Item B, minister of the oath of office to reelect a council member, Tom Hamilton, district two. Reelect council member Michael Salazar, district three, and reelect Mayor Rico Medina at march. I could ask.
Yes, and may I?
Step down.
Yes, that would be perfect. If you would need me right there.
Motion of the United States.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
And total reservation.
Purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will. Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of which.
Chapter.
I am going to support this, but I also think this is something the council should look at. I don't believe the council needs to. Should we say annoying to the officers that have been selected by the body? It's implied that at a future consideration, but this is the process that we have. Item J, considered adoption of resolution accepting the completion of Centennial Plaza improvement project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, another great opportunity to really reflect and thank staff and be able to provide an amazing improvement to our downtown, so basically, this is a kudos to everyone involved and I hope everybody enjoys the festive decorations at Centennial Plaza.
Okay, is there anything from the public on consent with the exception of N?
I have no speaker cards.
Good evening, comments or questions, zoom in. Council action for consent for A through M, please.
Deputy Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the remainder of the consent counter, the second to item N.
I will second it.
Looked and seconded to approve all consent with the exception of N. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item N, considered adoption of resolution approving the third amendment to the employee agreement between the city of San Bruno and Alex D McIntyre. And for the record, as required under the Brown Act, I am providing the summary of the proposed amendment to the city manager's contract, item seven N. On the consent calendar adopts resolution amending the city manager's contract to one, provide the twenty twenty four winter holiday closure benefits provided to all the other employees, and two, to provide a membership here at the rack. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, and I reluctantly pulled this. And I wanted to share my thoughts on it and I want to make sure that my pulling of this and not supporting this isn't a reflection of the performance of our city manager. It's basically, it comes down to the timing of the contract and a contract will be up for possible consideration later of next year. And so at this point, I, I, I didn't feel appropriate to be able to support this.
Do you have any comments for colleagues? Any public comment?
I have no speaker cards.
To the body for action.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Second. Motion and seconded to approve item N. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passed as four one with Marty Medina dissenting. Item eight, conduct of business. One, considered adoption of the resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election for the city of San Bruno held on November fifth, twenty twenty four, as provided by law. City Clerk.
I apologize, let me just pull up my presentation. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Lupita Huerta, City Clerk for the city of San Bruno, and I will be presenting the results of the November fifth, twenty twenty four municipal election. In June twenty twenty four, the council adopted a resolution, the resolution calling a general municipal election for the seats of mayor, a city council member for district two, and a district, and a council member for district three. In July of twenty twenty four, the council adopted a resolution and ordinance to submit a measure to the voters for general obligation bonds, also known as geo-bonds, to finance municipal improvements constituting public infrastructure. Set election took place on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty four, and the results are Rico Medina was elected as mayor, Tom as council member for district two, and Michael Salazar was elected as council member for district three. Andrew Q was approved and adopted by the voters, surpassing the required two-third percentage of votes. Therefore, tonight's recommended action is to adopt the resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election for the city of San Bruno held on November fifth, twenty twenty four, as provided by law. And I think these were.
Very good for the report. Any questions in the rollings from the report? Any public comments?
I have no speaker cards.
Any action by council on the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Motion made to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Item B, minister of the oath of office to reelect a council member, Tom Hamilton, district two. Reelect council member Michael Salazar, district three, and reelect Mayor Rico Medina at march. I could ask.
Yes, and may I?
Step down.
Yes, that would be perfect. If you would need me right there. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name, just solemnly swear. That I support and defend
Sorry.
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
And total reservation.
Purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will. Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties. Of which.
May I let John and.
Do you repeat after me, please? I, Rico Medina, do solemnly swear.
I, Rico Medina, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, we got through that. I don't think it made many mistakes, that's great. Now, now we'll have an opportunity to hear from the newly elected members. Mr. Hamilton, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to thank the people of San Bruno for placing their trots in the wind again. It is a dreadful honor to serve the community I love for a second term on city council. Want to thank my amazing family, my wife Karen, and my children Lily and Matthew for their unwavering support and love throughout this crazy journey. Your sacrifices, especially over these past few months. I can't look at you, as I've been away so much, me and the world to me, and there's no way I could do any of this without you. My reelection would not have been possible without the support of a small but mighty group of dedicated volunteers closely on this campaign. To everyone who stapled flyers, prepared signs, walked door to door, talked with our neighbors, and gave so much of their time to share the truth in the face of a tide of misinformation, thank you. Your passion, your energy, your commitment carried this campaign forward and demonstrated the heart of our San Bruno community. This, of course, includes my colleague and friend, council member Marty Medina, who walked for me more than anyone. Thank you, Marty. Over the past few months, we focused on the themes that unite us. Working to ensure that San Bruno is safe, clean, and well-run, that it remains a place we are all proud to call home. We talked about the importance of fiscal responsibility, working together to get our finances in order with transparency and with accountability. We champion public safety because everyone deserves to feel secure in their neighborhoods. And we went all in on the value of smart growth, working to address our housing crisis while respecting the character of the city above. But our work is far from over. A thriving San Bruno requires all of us, not just elected officials, but the entire community, to step up and be engaged. Over the course of this campaign, it became clear to me that ever, than ever, that misinformation runs like the wind while the truth shuffles slowly behind. And that we are most vulnerable to this when folks are not plugged in to what is going on in our community. As your council member, I remain deeply committed to creating more opportunities for you to participate in shaping the future of our city. I commit to expanding my community town halls beyond the multifamily complexes to include as many residents as possible. I will continue to increase my engagement on social media to keep folks informed, not only what important topics are coming, are upcoming on our meeting agendas, but why you should care about these things. And this week, I'm launching an opt-in email newsletter to help folks who probably, very smartly, are not on social media, but want to stay informed about what's going on in our community. To my colleagues, Rico, Sandy, Marty, and Michael, I commit to continue to collaborate with you and our talented, talented city team under the steady leadership of City Mayor Shrev McIntyre on the many challenges and opportunities we have ahead of us. There are many exciting changes in store over the next four years. With the Tanforan project getting underway, new housing in district two and all around the city, commitment to protecting our community against the effects of climate change, continued focus on our downtown's revitalization, and so much more. San Bruno is at its best when we come together as one community. Let's take this opportunity to strengthen our connections, to celebrate our diversity, to ensure that everyone, whether your family has lived here for generations or you just recently joined us, feels a sense of belonging and pride here in the city with a heart. Thank you again for this opportunity to serve you. I look forward to working with all of you to continue to make San Bruno a better place for every resident, every family, and every generation in health. Let's get back to work. I'm not using the habit of reading what I, what I say, but I did spend a lot of time putting this together, just want to make sure I get it right. In preparing for tonight's meeting, I reflected on my years of service and I wanted to share just a few highlights of that tonight, going back to two thousand and five, almost twenty years ago, when I ran for the first time in public office. Although I lost that election, I never lost the desire to serve my community. Four years later, in two thousand and nine, I made it to the council. And since then, I have returned to this office three times. And I have had the honor of serving as your vice mayor for those years. During that time, I've also represented the city on City and County Association of Governments, currently as the vice chair, as well as a member of the legislative committees, and the express lane board, where I'm also vice chair. And separately, I serve on the board, the countywide tax oversight board, or I'm currently serving my second term as chairperson. I share these facts tonight because they speak to my commitment to serve, represent, and advocate for you. I am grateful to you, the voters of San Bruno, the entire city, for allowing me the opportunity to serve. I took office in twenty twenty. I reflected on the hardships of that year, which included extreme weather, wildfires, and of course, COVID- nineteen. I did not realize at the time that the impacts of COVID would be as long or as damaging as they actually were. Even then, I remained optimistic. I knew our community would persevere. I said then that we would come back stronger, and so we have.
And we sit here in this beautiful new facility. I am reminded of our resilience and inspired by what we can accomplish when we work together. Reflecting also on how this facility came to be through a tragic fire that claimed eight lives in our community. I realized that I was right to be optimistic because we can find hope even in tragedy. On a personal note, in 2021, I lost my son Nicholas. And this community helped me find strength to cope with that loss. We can find strength even in our suffering. Again, I say I am so grateful to this community. And now get back to this year's election. This year, I ran and opposed. I will say I am grateful to any aspiring candidates who decided I was doing a respectable job. Thank you. One vote would have been enough to win, but being a numbers guy that I am, I was interested in looking at the numbers a little closer. I found that while not everyone in San Bruno participated in the local races, a full eighty percent of the residents that did vote in my district supported me. I am deeply honored and humbled by the trust you've placed in me. As always, I promise to serve with integrity, transparency, and deep commitment to our community's well-being. I will always listen to your concerns, advocate for your needs, and work to ensure that our city remains a place where everyone can thrive. Our community, our community has also shown a renewed commitment to improvement, approving a bond measure that will fund critical infrastructure improvements. Some critics said our community would never approve it. Yet here we are, poised again to continue our positive trajectory. I genuinely, genuinely appreciate this commitment and the trust you've placed in all of us. With this election, we are now fully emerged in the council districts that we created in 2020. I want to offer my district, District Three, an opportunity to share their priorities with me. To that end, I launched the survey, which I encourage everyone in the district to participate in. You can find it at sanbrunod3.com. That's sanbruno, letter D, number three, dot com. It's a quick survey. It should only take a few minutes to fill out. And to those who have already filled it out, thank you for leading the charge. The credit for that survey, by the way, goes to my wife Sandra, who has always supported me in my public service. Milchi and my son Michael have always been amazing supporters. My family is here tonight, my mom, my sister, my wife Sandra, and my son Michael. Thank you for being here, and to you, I want to say I love you all very much, and I want to thank you for always helping me to be the best version. With that, I will conclude by again thanking the people of San Bruno for their trust and support. I also want to express my heartfelt gratitude to all our city employees who do the real work of making our city the best it can be. Together, we will build a city that is inclusive, sustainable, and prosperous for all. Thank you.
I mean, I'll be a little longer, but not that long with this voice. I really, truly first want to thank San Bruno for re-electing me as their mayor. This has been and continues to be an honor. We're, as a third generation, lifelong San Bruno resident, former city employee. I also want to take time to thank the San Bruno Professional Firefighters Association, the San Bruno Police Officers Association for their endorsements. They don't give it lightly, and I was honored to receive them. Along with the Labor Council, Building and Trades, and Teamsters Local Seven Joint Council. I thank them for their endorsements, and of course, most importantly, to my family and friends and volunteers who have made it possible for me to serve this community. Without them, it would not be possible. I want to introduce the gentleman, the sworn man tonight. His name is John Devincenzi. I just can't call him John because he is my high school teacher. Mr. D, as known or Devo, which oddly enough, found out that Ari Delay, and when I introduced him, he was a teacher at Burlingame when Ari was there himself. Mr. D taught me leadership at Cappuccino High School. He attended and taught at Crestmore, went to Close, went to Cap, and then retired at Burlingame. The reason I wanted Mr. D to administer the oath is because I want people to understand the importance of what one person can do. How they can change somebody dramatically from the start, and Mr. D did that. In his leadership class, we did a fundraiser for Sevy Hardware. Somebody that Mr. D and his son went to school with in preschool. Back then, you could not get a bone marrow transplant. It wasn't allowed. So the parents begged to raise money to save their child. Back then, in the eighties, a hundred thousand dollars was what they needed. And we did things as a community, as a school. And he, back then, had a mustache, only, and he put his mustache on the line. Cappuccino raised more during rally court, during lunch. I shaved his mustache because we won. The sadness that it was, she came out of her mission and passed. But what it taught me was people could come together. People could be motivated to do things they thought not possible. He also gave me some teacherly advice when I was going to run for student body vice president. And he said, "Why are you going to run for that? It's like you wanted to be, run for president." I said, "Well, it's going to be an easier election. I don't want to go against the captain of the football team. I mean, come on, this is like, what am I thinking?" And he said, "Give it some thought. Will you regret later in life that you didn't do what you wanted to do and you settled for something different?" So I did run for student body president. Unfortunately, I won. But that is why I bring forward Mr. Devin Devincenzi. Educators are critical to this community, to our youth, and to our future. And Mr. D, you made a difference in my life, and I'm internally grateful and blessed to have you. Thank you, sir. Every two years, the mayor's seat is up as we, and I reflect to check in with family and friends who will always give honest feedbacks, sometimes too much. And then also to see where are we at as a city? Or about at a county level? Will we be represented? Are we going to be contributing? Will we have a voice that becomes a joint power authorities that affect this county? That come up when it talks about public safety communications, ambulance. All of those nuances that are on a regional basis, that it is essential that we have a voice and a face. Since the election, I have become vice chair of the Cal Training Joint Power Board, where we have three representatives from San Francisco, three from Santa Clara County, and three from San Mateo County. I happen to be one, the first San Bruno person to serve on this capacity. And there are others, whether it's SAM Trans, Transportation Authority, Manage Alains, the ambulance services. All of those are critical things that I have various roles in and will continue to do those. This campaign, to be honest, was a difficult one for me. Lot of emails, posts, comments made in public. But what was more challenging was just maybe me getting a little mature and having back and leg issues that still affect me today that started back in June. I am not a hundred percent and didn't have the same ability during this election, but I did the best, and I'm recovering in the process. In addition, another challenge, October 22nd, I alluded to this last meeting. At 4:30 PM, we had a meeting at seven. I get a text. There's ambulance, fire department, mother's house. She doesn't live nearby. But I did tell the vice mayor, the city manager, I may need to step down to make the phone call, to get the assessment of how she's doing. And without any hesitation or reservation, and we had various events. Mr. Salazar, thank you, said, "Don't worry, I'll be there. I'll sub. I'll cut the ribbon, whatever needs to be done." This is what made it easier and gave me peace of mind. And after ten nights and eleven days in the hospital, when she started, she began her stay to say goodbye to me. She's back home. And obviously, it is thanks to folks that give me that support that allowed me to be able to function. And I want to thank the vice mayor, Michael, for stepping in, helping if and when needed. Even with these unique times and challenges, which could bring any person down or to pause in oneself. It is this community, it is the residents that give me the passion, the pride, and the spirit to continue on, to rise up, to continue to represent, and give San Bruno a hundred percent. We, as a council and staff, have made progress. If any council candidate or elected says, "I will, I did," then they don't know the system or may be playing politics. Or it takes three, not one, to give direction to move the city forward. As an example, we have in the last few months of this year alone opened this facility. Centennial Plaza, groundbreaking from Florida Park. The opening of the first dispensary, expanded vents at Centennial Plaza, rooting for Julian dedication. New streets have been paved and sidewalks improvements, pedestrian bike improvements. None of this, of course, would or could get done without staff. It is their dedication. It is their commitment. And seeing these come to fruition is thanks to all of them. This next year, we will have a retreat to discuss initiatives. Thanks to the voters, as was indicated, of San Bruno, we will have measure Q to discuss as well. We will review our policies and procedures, and if we continue to stick to what we agree upon and we should need to adjust an initiative by taking one to replace it with another. If we do this, we will improve on and continue to move our city forward. As you know, we get many emails, questions and comments. One email I received just last month was one I was going to mention. It's from a Parkside student. And he emailed me, "Dear Mayor, today I will invite you to my Parkside School Orchestra concert. The day for the Parkside concert will be at Wednesday, November 20th, and the concert time will be at 6 PM. The cost will be seven dollars. If there are any changes, please email me back. Sincerely, I'll give the names, the guy you gave your signature to at the grand opening." So what does a mayor do to get that kind of email? Well, once you get it, make sure you're on time, you pay your seven dollars, and you watch the concert. And that's what I did. Please communicate. As simple as that. I did not know it was on the 20th, but I certainly was there. And that goes for anyone. We need to communicate to each other. We need to inform one another. Please don't assume we see it or hear it all. But we can make a difference together. And I believe in this city. I always have. I see it in its worst, but it rises up to its best. And it stands by one another, and it stands with each other. I will tell you, I am truly blessed to call San Bruno a home and honored to serve as its mayor. With much love and appreciation to all of my family and friends, but without, I would truly be honored. May all of you have a happy holidays, a merry Christmas, and may 2025 bring much health and happiness to all. Thank you. Appointment of vice mayor to serve as one term. Under our municipal code, sometimes people say, you know, in other cities, they don't know who the mayor, the vice mayor is going to be. But we know who the mayor is, and we know who the vice mayor is going to be, and it's going to be Marty Medina, our municipal code. It is his time, his turn to be vice mayor, and so long as you're good to go. Do we have any for this evening? Seeing, hearing, none. Move on to item 10, comments from council members. Councilmember Marty Medina discussed whether to agendize an upcoming city council meeting to creation of an ad hoc subcommittee to assist staff with improving the paid parking program. Before you start, I wanted to acknowledge Sal from Senator Becker's office is here, and I thank you, sir. You're always here for us, and we appreciate it. Always here. So thank you. Medina, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm going to go ahead and start. The paid parking program has been very difficult, a very difficult project for various reasons. As the district board representative, I have attended five community meetings, spoke to numerous business owners, and have engaged with our community in person and on Facebook and Nextdoor. I have shared these community concerns and requested changes at council meetings for months. During the November 12th study session, a number of paid parking program modifications were discussed. However, there was not enough time to thoroughly review the potential changes. As mentioned during the study session, I am interested in serving on an ad hoc committee to assist staff with reviewing the proposed changes and obtaining community input to make improvements to the program. In the past, the council has had a number of ad hoc committees that worked with staff on various issues such as utility rate increases, infrastructure programs, and a downtown improvement committee. So tonight, I'm asking my colleagues to agree it is time to take action. The number of modifications are large, and we need a timeframe to implement those and with an ad hoc do more in a more efficient manner.
Thank you very much. Question, comments from colleagues? Councilman Grant?
So, thank you, Marty. I am supportive of forming an ad hoc committee, and I'll let me clear that the purpose of the committee is not to get in the way of staff and get in the way of the process of trying to improve the program. Why I think of having this subcommittee in place now is because of what our role is supposed to be as we sit up here. We are elected representatives, and we are supposed to be representing the public, the people of San Bruno, and I think it's critically important that their voice be part of the conversation as we work to fix the problems with our parking program. So I am supportive of this for the, that's the main reason. And I would really like to see the list that we had come up with from the last meeting, just to make sure that what is being worked on is what we agreed to. I know that there were many things on that list, and as Marty said, we went through it pretty quickly. And just because of the timing of the meeting, and so I just want to make sure, because this is so important, that we, that we're focusing on what we all agree to. So I will be supporting this request to agendize it.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm a little concerned about forming a subcommittee to address this because we've all had input on this. And historically, we've been mostly moving away from having separate committees. We used to have a ton of subcommittees. For the most part, I don't know that they really generated a lot of benefit other than, you know, sometimes when things are very complicated and we need large policy decisions, that there is some benefit in filtering through some of that information. But for the parking program, I think we've all acknowledged that we recognize the issues, the shortcomings, and provide, I think, pretty substantial feedback to staff. And being that I believe we've moved past sort of policy decisions, I would us as electeds to interfere with the working through of the details, because I think they really are, it's it's details now that need to be worked through when we talk about the changes that are coming. And so we spoke about a number of different things. I think staff took those comments to that direction. And I believe they are working on those things right now. And so I don't know that we would necessarily, as electeds, add anything to that process at this point. So I understand that there is a lot of interest from the community, and and, Marty, I know you guys have really been embedded in that, working with the community, but I just don't see how a subcommittee is going to help. But I just don't see how a subcommittee is going to help move this any quicker.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern also with the ad hoc committee is it would delay the process of getting the decision. In our November twenty sixth meeting, I believe that all of us have given our suggestion on and direction to Chief Ryan, what we can approve unanimously. And there are also some issues that requires more, that are more complex, that requires more study. And I am okay with that, without having the ad hoc committee. But I think the best decision is to bring, wait for the staff to sooner than later, to bring the decision of the suggestion that we have given to them and the direction that we have given to them on November twenty sixth. I think that's what, that's possible scenario that the council can make decision on. If the staff can regulate sooner than later, instead of forming an ad hoc committee.
For me, I have some concerns. I think that we had a study session, we have heard from folks at various times. We did have ad hoc committee for folks who means to council staff get in a room. Doesn't mean it's open to public, it's called standing in. So to me, this is less transparent, less transparent. All five of us have heard comments, good, bad, and in between. And so to me, I think all five of us should be here to hear it. What also concerns me is our last study session. I'm going to say we got a little midterm from the chief on the history of where it was from its beginning to today. He went back and watched every video, all the public comments, all of our actions, and has the history and the knowledge. His last council meeting, I believe, will be January fourteenth, I believe. And yet, this wouldn't come up until the fourteenth to appoint an ad hoc committee, which the mayor appoints the ad hoc committee and is validated by the council. So to me, we lose that opportunity. It also is a month from now. Does that mean everything goes into timeout? To me, people want something done, and I think hopefully on the fourteenth, some things might be able to be brought back already. Not everything will, that's not realistic. Some of it's easier, some of it's complex, there's a lot of variables to it. But I think it should be worked on. We gave two weeks ago, we all sat here, we gave our feedback. On El Camino Parking, I don't know what else this council needs to give. I think it was pretty clear. Staff needs to work out the details. So to me, it delays it. To me, it is not as transparent, and I believe we've all been in this from the start. And I believe it should be all five of us that continue this and not have it in a two ad hoc committee, and then has to come up with staff to bring it back to us. And then we have to then make decisions, and then they go forward. I think we need, we have, time is of the essence, and I think this delays the process. That's those are my comments.
I want to, I should have said the first time, and I apologize, that it is not my intention to serve on this. So just, I think Marty should be on it, just because of his role as the district board of council members. But if we form the committee, I would hope that one of my other colleagues would serve with Marty on it. Just, you know, to make sure it's moving forward in the way that you would want. I would say, I know, obviously, I'm just second term. And so I wasn't here for the time when there were many, many subcommittees happening all over the place. There's only been a handful of them while I've been here, and it's been pretty successful. The first one I served on very early on was the Clean SD Subcommittee, which was formed because of the rampant dumping that was happening during COVID. And one of the many things that came out of that was a pilot program to have the to have all of the tickets for dumping go straight to recology so they can be picked up. And that pilot program was so successful, they got baked into our recology contract. The other subcommittee that was formed was the Downtown Improvement Committee. On that committee, we designed Centennial Plaza. We designed the actual design that is built and that is sitting there. That's pretty darn successful. So I don't subscribe to the notion that the subcommittees by definition are unsuccessful. I just wanted to share that.
Yes, Marty. All right. So I don't want to swing against the tide here. I do want to point out that we don't have a schedule, but it sounds like January fourteenth, the first meeting, we're going to have an update, and we'll have actual items. And if that's the case, then that's fine. We will continue to be available to meet with our city manager to, in our one-on-one meetings, to check on the progress. But if that's possible, it would be nice to get an update before then to kind of see where we're at. Because it's been a month since December, since November twelfth, when we had the meeting. I think it's November twelfth that we had the meeting. And there'll be two months, and we have data. We have kiosks that are still inoperable, the majority of them are, but there are still some. And we still have issues from residents and business owners that are waiting for us to take action. And will be another month from now. And it's okay, the majority of the council is fine with that, but we really need to act. We need to fix the problems that we're aware of. And if we're going to start getting some results back by January fourteen, that's great. But I see that there's no point talking about this any further. You can find out if the city manager is willing to confirm that the seven items that were discussed, and where are we? And how long is this going to take to get to the solutions that we're looking at? Because I think our community has been waiting for quite a while. And some of those fixes were readily available. And so I'll leave it at that. I don't know if it's, if Mr. Mayor, you think it's appropriate to have our city manager provide some feedback about that meeting? I know, I see differently, that I think when the council's more engaged with the various items, that things can be pushed along. It isn't, it is not an intent to delay, it's to actually see more things get done. And this is probably the most problematic item that I have faced on the council. And it's for various reasons, and we need to take action and seeing it get done sooner than later, it's due. So it's all right for our city manager to give us some feedback.
So we always have the availability, as we know, the one-on-ones to get some updates from the city manager. I don't know if he is or isn't. Again, I will just say, from what I even know, not everything can come back on the fourteenth. There are some things that are more simplistic than that. On the fourteenth would be to appoint an ad hoc, which I appreciate, but I appoint the committees, the mayor does. So you're saying you're not serving, but he's going to serve, you're hoping for him. So that's not too big, so I can say, if we get there next month. But at the same time, that would point the committee, which then would be getting work. So there's a month that has gone by that work can be being done, and that's puts it on pause. Two members of the ad hoc committee meet, and then it has to come back to the full council, which is at the next January. So to me, it does keep on being, so I think people want to hear stuff. City manager, do you have any?
I don't, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Medina, the Mayor Medina and Vice Mayor Medina. Sorry, okay. Thank you. Well, actually, you're right. So I don't have a great update for the moment. I have spoken to a number of you offline already about the number of items that we are looking at. Some of the staff started to jump on to ones what I'll call low-hanging fruit. I'm not going to be able to articulate which ones those are right now. We have a key meeting tomorrow with key people from the staff who are going to figure out what are the hurdles ahead for each of the initiatives that the council has talked about, figuring out next steps, and when we can schedule them to come back. I had mentioned earlier to the mayor that it appears on January fourteenth, there's going to be a couple of items we can bring back that are the easier to fix items. Some of the other items, while they may be, they may be unanimous among the council about going forward, we have to understand what the consequence of this is, and what it looks like and what it means. So I think we have a little more work to do, but tomorrow, my executive team meeting, I think there's only one person who's not included in this conversation, so we'll excuse that person. But basically, we're going to spend a solid amount of time coming up with the, defining the issues, and then figuring out the timeline for getting them completed. So that's the commitment I can make for the moment.
So, Mr. Mayor, this creation of committee isn't saying, staff, stop what you're doing. Continue what you're doing. And when, I believe, we've served on a couple of subcommittees together. So it's about staff does the work, they check in, and give us an update where they're at. And we're like, yeah, that's, that sounds good, maybe that little part isn't, but it isn't saying to delay or stop the work. We all understand our staff is really busy and are working on this. This is just a means to provide that additional feedback, which even if a subcommittee doesn't agree on a topic, that information is shared. But it's, I'm fine, I'm disappointed, but I understand, you know, it takes three, so, thank you.
Oh, any other comments?
Great, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank everybody who came tonight to help us celebrate. Sticking around till the end, definitely great to have you here, just a bunch of empty seats. So thank you all for coming and for sticking around.
So, I also like to thank everybody for coming. It's nice to see so many faces and really, really appreciate the support. I do want to mention that Second Harvest this month is going to be on December eighteenth, earlier than usual because of the holidays. So as usual, it'll be at Bel Air Elementary. If you are food insecure, you can be signed up on the spot. And we're always looking for volunteers. There was a record number of volunteers last time. So it'll be, it'll be great to see. So just want to make sure that everyone is aware. Thank you.
Okay, I checked, there's a public comment. So with that, those comments just kind of, to myself, I'm just, thank you for being here. As I remind people, holidays are great, but holidays can be challenging. So reach out to each other, your family, your buddies, maybe that you haven't seen or heard from. Just check in, make sure everybody's doing okay. I think sometimes you'd be surprised. As long as we look after each other, we'll get through the holidays, we'll wake up to a bright twenty twenty five, where San Bruno and all of us together will move forward and together as a team, continue on the path of success. So with that, to all, you have a blessed, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a great new year. This meeting will adjourn to the next regular meeting, which will be held January fourteen, twenty twenty five, at seven o'clock. Meeting adjourned.